Evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 13, 2019 meeting. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda, we have two public hearings. Barbara, has the notices been put in a paper? I saw the copy of the notices, the signs were put at the site for Paramount.
The notice for the Banfee Board preliminary subdivision was placed in Somers Record on 3/31, and the adjoining property owner's notices were mailed on November 1, and the sign was posted on November 1.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to officially call the roll before we start?
Oh, sorry. I missed a meeting. I had to be retrained, all right? So, would you please do the roll call? Here.
Chairman Cherry. Ms. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. McNamara.
Here.
Mr. Beano.
Here.
Mr. Goldenberg.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
And Mr. Zabardo.
Here.
I am glad to cut you off.
Thank you, Vicki. Appreciate it. First on our agenda is a public hearing for Nico Banfee and Bruce Ward. It's an application for our preliminary subdivision approval. It's for an abbreviated preliminary subdivision for a lot line change for 1.079 acres from Lot 47.08-1-34, which is located at 37 Meekle Street, and is to be added to Lot 4712-1-49, which is on 25 Mosman Avenue. The property is to be subdivided, that's to be subdivided, is located at 37 Meekle Street, and it's in the R-80 zoning district. Is there a representative from them here today?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything, anything you wanted to say?
No, unless you have questions.
Okay. Anybody, sir, anybody else want to say anything? No? Okay. Then, anybody from the board before I open up the public hearing?
No.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this? It doesn't appear to be anybody. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We need to make a negative deck under SEQA, that there's no significant impacts, and I'll make that motion that we make a negative deck under SEQA.
One second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we're ready for a, for final subdivision. Any board member comments?
No.
Okay.
Very neat package.
Want to approve the final subdivision lot, lot line change?
You have to waive the public hearing because both the preliminary and final are so.
I'll waive the, the public hearing for final subdivision. Make a motion to waive that?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we can vote on the final subdivision lot change.
We have a resolution.
We have a resolution. Has everybody seen it?
Yep.
It's over here.
209-113.
Yeah. I'm here somewhere. Is that, that's 209-113?
One day.
Any changes? Anybody see anything? Want to make a change? No?
No.
Okay. Make that motion then for 209, 2019, number 13. Resolution as presented to us tonight.
That a motion?
That's a motion. Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
They did all their work. Mm-hmm. Put the work on the front end, it works.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing for the Paramount at Somers. This is an entry renovation. It's an application to enclose an existing open entry canopy to create a large weather type vestibule, replace the existing concrete entry patio and planting beds with new ornamental concrete, an open walkway canopy to the vehicle drop-off area, new landscaping and site lighting. The property is located on the west side of Route 100, and it's located in the R-80 residential zone. Is there anyone here? You want to say, say anything?
Unless you have questions.
Any questions?
We've said it a couple times already.
Yep. All right. Any board member comments?
No.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on this? Make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we can make a negative deck since there's no archeologically sensitive and no impacts to any other wetlands. I'll make a neg, make a neg deck for that, for those two reasons. The AF Part II. That's a motion.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. And then, everybody saw the resolution?
Yes.
Yes, which is 2019-14. And so we need, I'm s-
Can I just ask a question about the resolution?
Sure.
Page six of seven, there's six without, is there anything missing? There's a six with a parentheses, and there's no data after it?
Yeah, no, six should be deleted. It's just skipped there.
Okay. Just want to make sure there's no data missing. Thank you.
All right, so then, with that one change, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2019-14, which is Section 170-114 in Chapter 144 of the Code of the Town of Somers, and Section 274A, the town of, state, New York State town law, subject to the conditions presented in this resolution.
For Chairman's signature, second.
Yeah. For my signature, okay?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. First is from, for the removal of the Dean's Bridge, and the second is for the removal of the Plum Brook Bridge. Evening.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Bussi with New York City DEP.
Do you want, do you want us to go out there? Do you want to put it up this way somewhere?
Yeah, we do have a presentation. We were going to direct it that way.
Well, you tell me, where do you want to go? What do you need to put it on?
We see a screen, so I guess we'll project that way.
Yeah, we'll go out, we'll go out, sit out there. Take your time.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you.
I want a front row seat. I want a front row seat. Close up view. John, you have a hand to get. Keep it. I know where it is. Right. They want to cut down 40 columns to open one of the decks. They're going to pay to take it down. Oh, okay. I thought we had. But who owns the bridges? We then? Don't we own the bridges? I want, I want to sell the steel. Yeah, we're not. We could go across that. It's made over there. It's a nice looking bridge. Thank you. You will take two of them? Yeah. Thank you. More paper.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here today. I'm Jeff Bussi, the Accountable Manager for New York City DEP for this project, and this is Crow 530A for the removal of Dean's and Plum Brook Bridges. With me here today is Ron Roman from Harstein Hanover. He's our Consultant Engineer, Project Manager. And Victoria Carpenter with NTech, she's in charge of our permitting. And Mark DeBalzo, and he's with our Bureau of Water Supply with DEP in our Capital Planning Division. So, next slide, John. So, just before we get started with our project, I just wanted to acknowledge that we understand that the town recently passed a resolution for the replacement of the Plum Brook Bridge, and DEP has responded to that resolution in the letter that you see there, and we are making plans to replace the Plum Brook Bridge under a future contract. Right now, they're setting up funding and budget lines and trying to get that project initiated. The project that we're talking about today is separate from that. This is just for the demolition of the two existing bridges, and obviously, that resolution is just for the Plum Brook Bridge. Next slide. Okay, so, Ron Roman from Harstein Hanover is going to go through a short presentation on the scope of work and what permits that we applied for.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening. My name is Ron Roman from Harstein Hanover. I'll go through the presentation for the removal of Dean's Bridge P and the Plum Brook Bridge M. As you can see here, this is the first slide. Project location is the Dean's Bridge P. It's located at the end of Dean's Bridge Road. It is once open. We closed the structure in 1994 due to structural deterioration. Basically, it's a connection between Dean's Bridge Road and Hardscrabble Road over the rail tracks there for Metro North Railroad. The railroad has removed that crossing about 10 years ago at this particular location. John, next one. Here you can see some of the existing site conditions for Dean's. Basically, we have the T-type intersection, which was, as I just mentioned, closed in 1994 on the east side of the project. We have the high-speed Metro North Railroad adjacent to that corridor with about, it's a 60 mile an hour track through that section. We have some localized clearing and grubbing to facilitate actually the removal of the bridge and the abutments. We also have, it's a pinned I-bar truss currently, which is a non-redundant structure. Also, we have a small boat storage for New York City DEP recreational users in that area, and also about 900 feet west of the project, we have New York State Electric and Gas high-tension lines in that corridor. The existing site conditions while we're here today, remove structurally obsolete bridge or the city's reservoir system, perform partial abutment removal to eliminate future maintenance and security issues. The west approach of Dean's Bridge passes below the New York State Electric and Gas High-Tension Overhead Utilities. Need to maintain access for utility companies while securing the site in this area. There is an adjacent high-speed Metro North Rail Line east of the bridge. The crossing, as I just mentioned, has been removed by Metro North Railroad, and in coordination with the railroad, they have told us basically there's no access during construction for this site across their tracks, nor will they put in a temporary crossing to facilitate deconstruction of the bridge.
Will not.
Will not. Construction anticipated to be from the town, Somers, to, due to the Metro North constraints. One thing we've considered is also the construction to begin after morning school bus pickup is completed in the vicinity of the Dean's Bridge site. Also, bridge materials have been sampled for asbestos PCB lead. Only lead was found with the paint of the railings and the structural steel members on the existing bridge. The next bridge is the Plum Brook Bridge M, which is basically at the bottom of the triangle, I call, between 100 and 138 over the Musqueet Reservoir. Here, the existing site conditions include, this is one of the larger recreational boat storage facilities for DEP. It has three boat storage areas. Again, this is also a pinned I-bar truss, which is a non-redundant type of structure. And then, in this vicinity, along parallel to the roadway as well as the bridge, New York State Electric and Gas has overhead transmission lines, which have recently been raised for this project from 40 feet to 55 feet to facilitate removal of the bridge and then construction in the future for a new bridge. They've already relocated the poles and raised the wires for us. Basically, existing site conditions at Plum Brook, we have removed structurally obsolete bridge or the city's reservoir system, perform partial abutment removal to eliminate future maintenance and security issues. As I mentioned, New York State Electric and Gas does have their lines adjacent to this bridge. Need to maintain access for the utility for the site while closing the bridge and the roadway. Construction site can be accessed from both the east and west side of the bridge in this case. Bridge materials also have been sampled for asbestos PCB lead. Only lead was found within the paint on the railings and the structural steel members. Here, Dean's Bridge is actually a unique structure since it's shared by two towns, town of North Salem on the east, and the town of Somers on the left side, as you can see in the purple shaded area. That's the area we'll be talking about for the permits tonight. Plum Brook is totally in the town. Here, as you can see by the purple in the reconstruction, the project area is delineated in the purple work zone there. Here, what's being removed on Dean's Bridge is basically the superstructure, which includes the, the bridge itself, the railings, the deck, and also the substructure. Partial abutment removal will include cutting down the abutments and removing the granite pylons and the capstones as well. Similarly, on the Plum Brook Bridge, it's the same type of scope, remove the superstructure, the railings, the deck, et cetera, and then also the substructure. While we're here tonight, we have applied for several town permits for the Dean's Bridge P and the Plum Brook Bridge M. We submitted the following permits to the town: tree removal permit, the wetland and water course permit, stormwater management, erosion and sedimentation control permit, and steep slope protection permits. The tree removal permit for Dean's Bridge, at Dean's Bridge, will be removing approximately 17 trees to facilitate basically deconstruction of the bridge. Following the removal of the bridge, the slope and the surrounding area will be regraded to a natural landscape, and new trees and landscaping will be installed. Here you can see a graphic of the area of the trees we're looking to remove in the town. This is to facilitate actually launching sub sectional barges in the reservoir to facilitate stabilization of the bridge during deconstruction, and then also to remove the bridge, and then also to have contractor access since Metro North will not allow us the east side. We have to go from the west side of the bridge. Here we have the, shows us the re-landscaping, what's going to look like post-construction. Basically, working with New York City DEP Arborist and Landscape Division, we've developed the grading and the landscaping based on elevations and working with the group. We've come up with several planting tables for trees, shrubs, et cetera. John, next slide. And here you can see on the site, approximately 52 trees will be replaced, shared between the two towns. Approximately 25 to 26 trees will be in the town here, and then also in the town of North Salem. Tree removal on Plum Brook Bridge M, also on this site, we anticipate 15 trees to be removed within the town to facilitate, again, demolition of this bridge. Following the removal of the bridge, for this particular contract, the slope and surrounding area will be regraded to natural landscape. New trees and landscaping will be installed. Here you can see the green dots are the trees necessary to come down for the, this particular project. And again, once post-construction for the landscaping, a landscaping plan has been developed based on, again, elevation, species, et cetera with DEP. And then you can see there's approximately, it looks like 32 trees will be placed back on this particular site. Wetland and water course permits were also applied for, for Dean's Bridge P. None of the proposed work at Dean's Bridge P will be done within the wetlands. Jurisdictional wetlands and non-wetland waters were identified within the project area along either bank of the Musqueet Reservoir. Here, the graphic illustrates in the blue is the wetlands, which were identified and flagged by a New York State certified wetland specialist for our contract. Also, we applied for the wetland and water course permit for Plum Brook Bridge. None of the proposed work at Plum Brook Bridge M will be done within the wetlands. Jurisdictional wetlands and non-wetland waters were identified in the project area along either bank of the Musqueet Reservoir. And here you can see also in the blue is the wetlands within this project corridor. We applied for the stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control permits. The project team has submitted the stormwater management, erosion and sedimentation control permit for Dean's Bridge and Plum Brook Bridge as well. We also applied for a steep slope protection. Dean's Bridge and Plum Brook Bridge sites contain steep slopes. The project team has applied for a steep slope protection permit for each site. Lead agency declaration, the DEP Bureau for Environmental Planning and Assessment, our analysis has concluded that the proposed action, demolition of Dean's Bridge and Plum Brook Bridge, is classified as a Type 1 action in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. DEP believes that is the appropriate lead agency and wishes to conduct a coordinated review by DEC for the above referenced action. New York State DEC has no objection to the DEP assuming lead agency status for this project. Stormwater pollution prevention plan, better known as a SWIP, has been created for both the Dean's Bridge P and Plum Brook Bridge M, and were approved and submitted by, we actually submitted to DEP, and they were approved by DEP. The SWIP packages are ready for the review approval by the town board. The MS4 forum is to be completed by the town upon approval of the SWIP, and once these documents have been completed and approved, the design team will apply for the Speedy's permit by submitting the notice of intent. This project has undergone extensive coordination through the development where we are today. Coordination, as you can see, with some of the regulatory agencies include at least four or five bureaus within the DEP themselves, from Betsy to BIP and BWS, Operation Security, Land Management, Recreation Security, New York State DEC also for the permitting, and then also SHIPO. These bridges are historic, and we're coordinating with the New York State Historic Preservation Office, as well as the Army Corps, and then also the local utilities. And the utility work out there is incorporated into the design contract, US Fish and Wildlife, and of course, the railroad, and the two towns. Part of the goals for this project in New York City DEP is sustainability, so we have certain envisioned protocol we're trying to follow and obtain. This particular project is going to be envisioned in gold. Basically, the New York State DEC and New York City DEP and our team has been coordinating over the last several months to donate the decks on these three structures. There's another bridge, not in this particular discussion tonight, that the Dean's Bridge and Plum Brook Bridge M decks are proposed to be donated to a New York State DEC Artificial Reef out on Long Island. Much discussion took place between the DEC and the team in order to understand logistics and considerations required to donate the bridge decks. Also, DEP has a zero landfill initiative goal. What does that mean? Basically, remaining steel from the bridges will be recycled. We have recyclers that will take the lead-based paint and recycle the steel. The existing fill behind the abutment back walls will be reused on-site as much as possible during the grading operations, re-landscaping, and then that will also be recycled off-site. The concrete from the abutments will be recycled, and then, in accordance with SHIPO requirements, the granite capstones will be taken off and stored in a New York City DEP-approved facility for Dean's Bridge, and the stones at Plum Brook will be reused for construction of a new bridge in the future under a different contract.
Hey, Ron? If I could just step in for a second. I just wanted to mention about the granite capstones. We recently had a request from the town supervisor, Supervisor Morrissey, to retain some of the granite capstones for the local historical society, so we're currently, you know, taking a look at that request and seeing what we could do to help that out.
Thanks, Jeff. Basically, when does this contract begin? Construction notice proceed is spring 2021. The anticipated construction duration is about 18 to 24 months, and that includes all three bridges, not just the two here, so that's the total duration of the contract. At this time?
Removal installation of the new bridge?
No, the new bridge for Plum Brook is under a different contract.
When you said all three.
There's another bridge in a different town.
Okay. The Lakeside Bridge in Bedford.
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
The landscaping is, say Plum Brook, 32 trees going.
Can you try and take the light over there?
Sure.
John, can you go back to that slide?
Should we go back to our seats?
Yeah, yeah, the presentation's over. Thank you.
Yeah, the presentation and the handout is the same, so if you have questions. John, if you just wanted to give it up here.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, we all leave that. Felt like I was in the police station again.
So, I guess my question is to do with the timing and landscaping, say 32 trees go in at Plum Brook, and looking at the timetable, this is, it says construction instead of destruction, and at what point are we looking at to build a new bridge? And what's the timing of putting the landscaping in? And does it go in and then it immediately has to come out or can't be used because you're doing something? What's how, what's the linkage synergy between the two of them? And also, if, it sounds like, for those trees that would stay, what kind of ongoing commitment is there to make sure that they really take beyond when they're first planted, so that they'll be there going forward? Because construction can, of a second bridge could be disruptive.
Yeah, the, the plans for the replacement of the Plum Brook Bridge, you know, like I said before, we're still in the very initial stages of trying to set up budget lines and obtain funding, you know, just to initiate the project. So, we are quite a few years away from actual construction of the bridge. We'll have to hire a design firm, we'll have to go through the whole design process, permitting, et cetera. You know, so there will be a number of years before we do rebuild the Plum Brook Bridge.
Where those trees will be in and growing, okay. And so, once they're planted, and then, what? I don't know how to put this. It's not like, is there a warranty? But when you put them in, how do we ensure that they do take?
Well, we have, um-
For lack of a better way of putting it.
Right.
For stability of soil and et cetera.
Right.
For all those reasons, we do the landscaping.
Right. Typically, we have a one-year maintenance warranty for all of the contractors' work.
Okay.
For the landscaping portion of it, I think we increased that to, is it 18 months?
18 months.
To 18 months after they're installed, so we'll be able to tell if the trees are taking or not within that time.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I have a question. You talk about the time it would take for the design of the new bridge. You already bought a design for a new bridge, and you appeared before us in 2007.
Correct.
And we sent you away. It was not reported correctly in the newspaper. You were sent away because you came in without preparations for the wetlands, so we sent you back to do that. You never reappeared until now, with plans to take down the bridge. I appreciate the fact that you showed on the wall a promise to do the bridge. I just want to remind our audience that in the year 1877, the state of New York empowered the city of New York to come and eviscerate the center of Somers and major waterways coming in, that they could take and impound that to store water, needed water, for the millions that live in the city of New York. Part of that was that if you got in the way of our existing roadways, or created a waterway that interrupted a roadway, you had to build and forever maintain a bridge, which is what we are talking about here. And I appreciate that you repeated that for the record, and we hope it won't be 12 years from now.
We hope so as well.
Because we are a growing town, and we have a really very strong need for that bridge, for safety reasons. I won't go into details about that. But, for the record, I just want to remind you of your own laws. Section 24-356 of the New York City Administration Code Title 24, which is how you incorporated the laws passed by the state of New York in 1877. It says, "Construction and repair of highways and bridges, rules and regulations, to prevent improper use. The city is hereby required to build, construct such highways and bridges as may be made necessary by the construction of any reservoir under this subchapter." necessary by the construction of any reservoir under this subchapter, and to repair and forever maintain such additional highway and bridges, and to remove the snow and the sand, et cetera, et cetera." Now, the reason I bring that up is for the obvious. I just want the audience to understand how serious this is, and I truly hope it is not 12 years. I'm an 84-year-old person. I hope I'm around to walk across the new bridge. I'm in good health. I thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. You're, you're removing X number of trees in order to get equipment in there to take down the bridge. Do you anticipate when you reconstruct that bridge, that you're going to have to take down those trees that you're planting now to get the same access? That's.
That's a valid point, and we have been thinking about that as well. As you know, the town resolution is fairly new, you know, that we have the requirement to rebuild the Plum Brook Bridge. And we have had some internal discussions about maybe minimizing the number of trees that we're putting back at the Plum Brook site, or at least strategically placing them so that they're not going to interfere with the new bridge. But unfortunately, you know, when we do go to build the new bridge, you know, we will have to, you know, excavate the site.
Yeah, since it's really, you don't have a design yet for the new bridge, you don't actually know what it's going to, what it's going to do.
Not exactly.
Now, are you also, are you also creating, when you have this steep slope situation? Because obviously, you're removing all that concrete, which is, I don't know, 10 feet above the reservoir. Are you creating new wetlands area? Or how does, how does that work with the, with the slopes going? Obviously, the slope is going to go down now into the reservoir. Does that create new wetlands? Or not?
Actually, we're not going down into the reservoir. We're actually cutting down just the abutments that are above the waterline in this case, and we'll be recreating on top of the existing partial abutment. So you'll still see a sliver of concrete, and then you'll see the re-landscape embankments with the vegetation. So over a couple of years, it'll look like natural shoreline, but you'll still see that fine edge of the abutment.
Okay.
Down that area.
All right, that was what I was, I was thinking towards.
Does the DEP have access to software that can create a computer modeling of what this could look like in the two stages? So we've seen presentations where the concept is shown to us what it would look like when we remove the bridge to help illustrate now what you mean by the abutment, some of it remaining, some of it being graded. We'd like to get an idea aesthetically what it would look like, and obviously structurally as well, if that is something that the DEP can do and present to us the next time. I think that would be helpful in allowing us to sort of visualize, you know, the bridge was built in 1904, so we don't really know what it looks like when it's not there. And what your plans to do on the shorelines, I think, is also critical. There is access or public access for boat launches and fishing. So there's been some concern from some of the constituents in the various committees within the town that were concerned what was going to happen now when the, in the process of the bridge being removed until we're at the point of approval for a reconstruction. And I think that that's something that you may want to focus in on to really make it clear to everyone that this is what we're going to do, this is what it will look like, and it will allow us to just get a better idea of what it would look like.
Okay, so to address some of those points, the contract plans as they stand today will illustrate the approximate cut lines and then what elevation we're cutting down to for the recreating. As the gentleman mentioned, you are about, at Plum Brook, you're probably about six, seven feet of concrete wing wall in that area, and then Dean's is even shallower in that case. There's some areas that, you know, we'll be taking down the concrete, and we're actually reducing the steepness of the slopes by re-grading a much flatter to have the landscape vegetate and actually take root, if you will, in those areas. So we do have some of those advanced plans, you know, developed. If you're looking for a 3D rendering or something of that nature, is that what you're referring to basically?
Or 2D sketch of what, how you plan to, you know, what will, what will the shoreline look like with the bridge not there?
Yeah.
If I decided to walk the end of Plum Brook Road, what will I see?
There are, there will be concrete barriers at the end of the terminus of Plum Brook Road post-construction. That's for obviously vehicular safety, traveling public, since a lot of folks still use the road for walking dogs, bicycles, joggers, et cetera. But for security reasons, we will have concrete barriers on both the side of Dean's Bridge and then Plum Brook on both approaches to mitigate vehicular traffic from going down there. The post-construction condition will look like natural shoreline, right? So as far as walking down and fishing off the end of it, that was one of the concerns for site safety and security, why we want to make it look like a natural shoreline versus, you know, a path or something like that where somebody jumps off the abutments, et cetera. So it'll look like shoreline at the end of the day.
So, Ron, we can give a rendering.
Yeah.
Of some sort that can show that.
Yeah, so we, unfortunately, we've been spoiled because another project that's coming up a little later, which is this new, new school that they're putting in, they, they gave us a nice 3D.
A fly-in.
A virtual, a virtual proposal, and everybody was very impressed with that. So I think that's what we're, we're driving at is something, that's what we would like. If you have to end up just doing elevations, I, you know, that would be okay too. I, I don't, maybe not for everybody.
I have a question. I have an engineering question. I have an engineering, I'm not an engineer, obviously, when you hear my question. Back when IBM was, before the planning board and the town board to build their super place up there, they considered using the Plum Brook Bridge as part of an access into, into the site. And as, as part of that, we found out that the city had not touched the bridge maintenance-wise since the year 1938, among other things. But the highway superintendent of the time, at that time, his name, may he rest in peace, Clayton Osborne, expressed a thought, and he said that the water that the bridge crosses over is not deep at that point. He expressed the point. Is that true? It's, I don't know what not deep is, you know? I don't know if that's 20 feet, 30 feet, 15 feet. I have no idea at, at the top point. And he expressed the thought that if the city were going to replace the bridge, why didn't they consider building, as they did with the Muscute enters the Amawak Reservoir, forms the Amawak Reservoir, putting in, you know, big pipes and building a roadway across that because it isn't that deep? So I, remembering he had raised the issue, of course, it didn't go anywhere, the IBM didn't use that direction. But is that a possibility? Or is that not?
At this particular, you're talking Plum Brook Bridge.
Yeah.
That's a particular site. The water is anywhere from about 10 to 15 feet deep. To facilitate a culvert design.
Yeah.
You'd have to study the hydraulic opening and then the velocities through that area to see, because New York State DOT has freeboard requirements for bottom of structure, et cetera, that you'd have to model and see. But this, you also have to remember this bridge is historic, so you have SHIPO regulations that we have to adhere to as far as the aesthetics for, you know, particular projects. But at this site, the culverts, you'd have to put in multiple culverts, which, you know, would be filling in the waterway, et cetera, and then just putting filler at the top of it. It wouldn't probably, in this case, work at that particular location due to the water depth, that the culverts would be too large.
In other words, you could not do it or?
You're talking about just putting a series of pipes in the water?
Yeah, right.
Just filling order top? No, the pipes would be tremendous to, their, the water depth is, you know, 10 to 12 feet, 15 feet deep.
Wait, 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 wait a second. That's, that's an excellent suggestion. My, my, my question is, I live in Heritage Hills, and we have a culvert that goes under one of our roads, which is about 12 feet high. It's not a pipe. It's, it's a built, it's a, it's a, it's a, what you call it, corrugated steel structure on a, on a, on a concrete base, which is sitting on virgin ground. And my question is, yeah, I, you're not going to, yeah, you're not going to make a pipe, you know, 12 feet in diameter. I understand that. But is, isn't it possible to, to do some kind of a constructed culvert like that? To do it, wouldn't that be a lot cheaper than putting in a whole new bridge? I mean, we may be way out of our depth with these questions.
Just because the highway superintendent raised it, that was the only reason I asked.
No, that's okay. It's a, you know, it's a good point. This, this would all come out when we are ready to move forward with the replacement project. We'll go through a facility planning phase where we go through many different options that could be, you know, appropriate for that site. So at that point in time, you know, that might be one of the suggestions, you know, or one of the alternates that we look at, you know, especially if the town is.
We're not the lead agency. It's, the town board is the lead agency, correct? I, I'm not aware of anybody asking for.
Just to take it down.
No, you know, we just want a bridge. We just want to be able to get across the water. Nobody's asking to replicate what was there.
Right. Yeah, we're, again, you know, we're a little, little far away from putting the new bridge back there, but that might be one of the alternates that we look at during facility planning.
I realize the quality, the water is important.
Sure.
Certainly, those things have to be considered.
Sure, we're the lead, just for the removals?
Yeah, I was just going to clarify that. Yeah, for lead agency, for what the removals are, they're all environmental permits. You are the lead agency.
For what?
The removals.
For what is currently before you, which is only the removal of the bridges and environmental permits. Remember, this is not site plan.
Oh, okay.
This is not subdivision. This is literally those four permits that they're before the planning board for.
Okay.
So you are the lead agency for the demolition. When it gets to replacement, that'll be a whole different story.
Okay. Well, I just knew the town board had sent the letter. You bloody, bloody put back the bridge.
It's an interested party, of course.
Another question, just to circle back on the removal of the bridge. It's approximate construction duration 18 to 24 months. Now, you've talked, we've got the two bridges in our town. There's a third bridge. Is this timetable for demolition of two bridges in parallel, or is it one and then the other in that time period? It's one question. And the other is, given the window of time, during what part of that period would we expect to have vehicles traveling through the neighborhoods transporting materials? Also, and I hesitate to even use the word, is there going to be any blasting involved? And just if you could, again, not an engineer, quickly, and I apologize for my ignorance, walk me through what it is to take a bridge apart in pieces and that take it through the town, and on what type of vehicles, so that I and people in the neighborhoods can have a sense of what to expect as things go through?
Sure. Okay, just to go through your questions, the duration from 18 to 24 months is basically remove all three structures. The contractor, if he opts to select crews to work on all three sites at once, he has that option to actually reduce it down to about 18 months. If he selects to do a bridge here, a bridge there, it'd be more than 24 months, right? As far as when the material will be going through the town, as noted from the last discussion back in 2007, one of the concerns was having schoolchildren on the streets when the construction vehicles would go through the neighborhoods, et cetera. So that's why we opted for the contractor's start time to be after the schoolchildren are picked up off the streets here around the bridge area. As far as how you demolish these particular bridges, they're non-redundant structures, or pin I-bar trusses, or a, basically, lakeside's a little different, but once you lose a pin, if you will, the bridge is prone to collapse, right? So the contractor has to go in and stabilize these particular structures and then decommission the bridge by removing the decks, et cetera, because the decks will be cleaned on-site, loaded in basically tandem trucks, covered trucks, loaded down and to a facility down on Long Island for launching out into the reef program under DEC Reef, right?
So if there's lead paint involved, what does cleaning on-site involve? And just to, to make sure I'm understanding this, so, so each bridge may be six to eight months for a particular bridge to be removed? Am I?
That's, that's, well, that's the total duration for bridge removal. The deck and the superstructure is relatively quick.
Okay.
Right? It's the concrete and the access to get to the east side of Dean's, for instance, right? So basically, it'd be a Class A containment on-site, where he'd take the panels of the deck into this facility, clean them on-site, load them on a truck, and those particular panels would be removed. The rest of the superstructure, the lead-based paint would be encapsulated, put in a truck. Basically, you cut it with a Class B system, basically clean around your cutting area by New York State DOT guidelines. You remove the structural elements and put them in back of the truck, covered, and then you basically remove those to the recycler to remove the superstructure steel. The concrete is just go in a dump truck. There is be assumed no blasting. This is some of, most of the sections on reinforced concrete, so you can remove that with a HOram, if you will, under normal construction noise.
What's a HOram?
A HOram is basically just a piece of equipment, a pneumatic hammer.
Like I said, I'm not an engineer. Go, to go back to the Class A in the contained area, is that cleaning, is that something that would be like, would result in like an airborne type of cleaning to remove materials? Is it a solvent, a liquid? What is actually going on in that, within the contained area?
It'd be a shed in a contained area, which uses negative air pressure to basically blast off using a black beauty product or something, a medium that would remove the lead-based paint and then would be cleaned on-site. And then that material would be canned as basically a waste product, and then that would be disposed of off-site, and then the panels, again, would be trucked to the reef program.
One, one second.
How are we sure that some of that lead paint won't wind up in the reservoir?
That's basically, it'd be in a shed in a, when I say shed, sir, it's a building designed by a professional engineer to facilitate a negative air pressure, so it's a fully encapsulated.
And they guarantee?
We've done projects over the reservoir before, Gate House Bridge being the town of Yorktown.
We've gone through hell in this town with lead contamination.
Okay.
We don't want the city heading to it.
The, what question? Didn't, I, I was, I'm confused. Didn't you say that the, the lead was only in the, in the metal structure and it not in the decking? Didn't you say that in the report?
The lead is actually in the structural steel elements, the railing, and then these particular structures have a grid deck system, which is a concrete-filled steel element.
Steel.
So the bottom of the support, purlins, as well as the small stringers, have the lead-based paint on the bottom.
Okay.
Underneath the deck system. So when you remove the deck.
Yeah.
Basically, you have to clean whatever is left prior to the DEC accepting it for the artificial reef.
Do you have an idea, when you talk about trucks going through, the steel, will we put on, what, what size, what kind of a truck? Are we talking about an 18-wheeler?
It'd be 18-wheelers.
Okay.
You know, these, these bridges are relatively light, if you will, because they're older designed truss structures using the pin I-bar type, so the elements are very sleek and slender. So it wouldn't be many trucks. Once the deck is gone, there's not much steel left of the truss element itself, as well as the lateral bracing, et cetera. So those, they come down pretty quick.
Okay.
Right? Using hydraulic shears, if you will.
So we're not looking at a lot of trips through the neighborhood?
No.
Really? So you don't envision it being disruptive because we've got children being, they're going to be picked up for school, there's also the drop-off from school. So you've got the, the two points in the day that you're watching there. I know the reuse of the deck for the reef, very environmentally, you know, a holistic view of things. Just out of curiosity, these toxic metals, for example, the lead, those things that we're extracting and containing in the containers.
Correct.
They'll be disposed of. For my own curiosity, being responsible, what, what is the responsible way that the state manages this material that we don't want in the reservoir and we don't want anybody? Where does it go? Who gets to hold it? The hot potato at the end?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, a lead abatement contractor licensed in the state of New York would be on board.
I mean, a lead abatement contractor licensed in the state of New York would be on board, and they would, you know, have to manifest, you know, watch where the lead goes from site to landfill. I mean, that would be their whole responsibility, and there'd be inspectors, you know, people making sure, you know, that containments are, you know, enclosed, that there's no paint escaping.
So it ultimately ends up in a landfill somewhere?
Yes, a certain disposal facility that accepts that lead.
Will the lead abatement contractor be a direct DEP contractor or subcontractor for your construction contractor?
It would be a subcontractor to the GC.
And you will have oversight from an environmental standpoint, your agency, to ensure that the lead abatement, which as we know is incredibly restricted in how it's done, all of that will be followed and monitored through the subcontractor agency or the, like, I'm sorry, the GC will be handling that, or DEP will personally be involved in the oversight of this abatement process?
Well, DEP will be involved throughout the whole process. Yeah, we have, you know, project managers will be out in the field the entire time of, during the, you know, deconstruction of the bridges during the whole project. And, you know, we're going to have a construction management team that is managing these type of issues. You know, this is just as big of an issue for DEP as it is for the town. You know, lead paint is very sensitive, and we don't want a lead paint going into the reservoir or anywhere else. You know, we don't want it airborne, we don't want it anywhere. So we are going to be taking a lot of precautions, you know, utilizing New York State DOT standards to remove all the lead.
Just one more question related to that. Is there, you have the structure of the shed within which the pressurized air removal takes place. Is there any monitor, is or are there any monitoring devices located out the shed that would report back in the event that any particulate matter somehow, contrary to what we think should happen in the shed, would somehow escape from the shed?
Yeah, there's a whole testing program, air monitoring program around the shed when the negative air pressure and the blasting's taking place. It's a whole protocol by New York State DOT. They follow the contractors as well as the specialists, as well as DEP oversight.
And how are the results of those testings disclosed to the community? Is it in real time? At what point do we find out and get a sense of how it's going? And I apologize, I'm not an engineer, so if my questions seem off the wall, but how do we know how it's going?
I would say that, you know, if that's something that the town is interested in, we can give you regular updates.
I mean, does the consulting engineer get a report? How, if something like this is happening, do you get notified? Would you, do you understand what I'm saying? What kind of regular notice would we get that, yes, everything is fine, numbers over X have not been reported at any of the stations, or one was, and then we did some remediation or dealt with it? You don't want to hear after the fact, I think, and I'm just one person here.
No, I agree. What we're trying to avoid is the, oh, by the way, we had an incident when we took that bridge down, but we, you know, we cleaned it up, it's no problem. And that, our constituents in the town, we have been handed and inherited some lead issues throughout the town, also involving reservoirs and waterways. So, you know, as a part of this board, we're always concerned about that. And so now that you've mentioned that there's lead paint involved, we need to make sure, you know, we have a church nearby, Plum Brook, we've got many, many residences there, not to mention the water itself that's consumed by New York City residents. So we would definitely want, and I think that would be something worthy of setting up some sort of channel where we are aware of the monitoring results pre, during, and post-construction phases, just to monitor, you know, lead contamination.
This board oversaw the DEP with the, what do you call it, getting the water and the aqueduct, and you guys did an excellent job. I was down there watching you, you did an excellent job. I hope that with this job, you guys go out and gals go out and do as good as you did with the reservoir.
That is our plan.
Yeah, I just want to step forward and commend you in the removal of the lead from Granite Point. I mean, you were so bloody strict there. The guy that owned the land went on it and did something very simple, and he got in big trouble just because he walked on it, and you chastised him and said you could have walked lead over into A, B, C, and D. And so I commend you that you are, you have a good track record in terms of taking lead out of...
Thank you. You know, we take the environment very seriously.
And I find it interesting, all these questions. I commend you, and I stand by them. They know what they're doing, and they're bloody strict, because I live right opposite Granite Point, and I was very impressed with it.
I don't think it's too much to ask for, at least at the minimum, weekly reports.
What we can do is, you know, as part of our permitting, we have permit processes in a database, and certain requirements like this, this is a town requirement, you know, that you want to be notified, we can make up a permit compliance task so that everyone moving forward knows that the town wants to be notified or informed weekly or, you know, whatever he feels is appropriate.
Chris, you have that weekly?
We work that into the contract documents.
I think weekly is good. While you're doing the actual deconstruction of this steel structure where you have a large accumulation of the lead paint that you need to abate out, and monitoring of the negative pressure room that you're going to utilize to do the blasting of that, and I think that unless anyone else, or when this does get open for public comment, if any of the other residents might have an issue or concern, I think it's fair, weekly, just to know that it's being monitored.
So specifically, weekly, where would it go?
Weekly, if all's going well.
Yeah.
Real time, if something...
Well, yeah, the second you find something that's a problem, then you gotta, no, don't wait a week. I think that goes with that.
This is Paul Costa. He's with New York City DEP. He's our portfolio manager.
Hi, everybody. So one thing we do with our projects is we do, we get the contractors on board, all the professionals are on board, they develop the plans. Also, for ourselves, we develop a stakeholder management plan early on the job. So part of that plan would be to look at, because we're talking weekly, we don't know how long the process is going to take, we don't know how the setup's going to look exactly. There's a lot of details that'll be worked out when the plan is developed. I think there will be a point before we approve that plan that we sit with the town, town representative, make you part of that stakeholder management plan, and develop whatever appropriate notifications are, sharing of information, sharing of the planning, the scheduling, all of that. There should be some open communication that is constant, so you know when it's coming, how it's coming, when the trucks will be coming through, what data can be shared, when, how it will be shared. That could all be worked out in a plan that we sit with the town as we get closer to, you know, the operations and whatnot.
Could I ask...
Who would that point person be in the town?
Town engineer.
Well, it's going to either be the consulting engineer or Steve Woffel, or both, most likely. To be determined.
Okay.
Can I ask a simple question? How many of these bridges have you guys taken down over the last 20 years?
Bullpuck.
Taken down and not replaced, or?
Yeah.
There aren't many of those. We've taken down a number of bridges and replaced them over the years.
Right. So this is not your first effort on this?
Oh, no. No, this is, we've done probably about 45 bridges behind us. We've done on many structures, including the House Bridge.
That's all I was driving at.
Well, I mean, listen, I agree with everyone on the board that you guys are well experienced in obviously managing environmental issues, since that is your core mission, obviously managing your reservoirs, but I am speaking on behalf of the residents of the town who may not understand that, or may feel that the DEP has been incredibly restrictive in their lives, because in 1877, you guys passed this law that took away our land, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just trying to sort of let everyone know that we, as a board, are maintaining that continuity, that we realize that this is a major project, right? This deconstruction of this bridge, there is some hazardous materials involved in that. That's going to obviously perk up people, more so than just taking down the structure. And so I just want to ensure on record that you guys are aware that this is concerns that we, as a board, know and hear from our community members, that we want to ensure that this is being monitored and done properly. I don't doubt that it won't be, but I want to give assurances to the residents here that it will be, and that's the purpose of the questioning.
And the bottom line, I wanted to know who the point person here is so that I or you can go check. That's all.
Any other board member comments? Do either of you want to say anything? No? No? So what would the next steps be for us?
Do we have to declare?
Do we have to declare ourselves lead agency?
No, we haven't done it.
We haven't done it, right? Yeah.
I don't think we're at that, not yet.
Yeah, this is just an informal tonight. This is totally informal. Steve Woffel, I know, has not looked this over. Jen's office has not formally looked this over. That would happen at the next meeting, and that's when we would take any required actions. So this was just on as informal tonight.
Okay. So that would be our December meeting?
The December meeting.
I will not be there, so I'm going to ask one other question. And this has to do with wetlands identification, page 25. How are the banks of the reservoir not designated wetland?
I did think of that in the presentation.
Every little 100-foot from any water stream in this town is wetland. You haven't identified the banks of the reservoir as wetland.
Right, yeah, so we did hire, you know, a New York State wetland delineation specialist. You know, they've followed the...
Speaking to Mike, bud?
Sorry, yes. We hired a wetland delineation specialist. You know, they filed the Army Corps Engineers Manual, you know, I guess following that with the three, you know, aspects they're looking at, you know, the type of species, the plants that are, you know, on site, are they hydrophytes and the hydroic soils? He did take soil samples and I guess, you know, tested all the water, you know, the soil to see if it was hydroic or not. And then if the substrate is saturated or not, you know, following those three characteristics, you know, he put all the flags out, and those are the wetlands that he delineated.
Does that answer?
No. If you're leaving, if you're leaving, if you're leaving a lot of the concrete, like you said, you're leaving the concrete, so you're going from the concrete base up. So wouldn't that, that is, I would assume, one of the reasons why where that concrete is, that doesn't become wetlands, because the vegetation and the dirt start above the water level.
Right, yeah, with the buttman's there as well, yep, exactly.
The buttman's there, so it's not, it's not a wetland. That's what seems to be in your drawings.
Jen, can you have somebody at your office just take a look and verify that for us?
Yeah.
Yeah, that it isn't.
Wetlands as...
I can talk to Joe about that.
Thanks. Right, Dennis, when you feel more comfortable?
Wetlands as we...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Let somebody from Woodard and Curran take a look, okay?
Yeah. We have all the buffer areas and all this, and none of us identified on here.
Okay. Okay, so... Thank you. So then we'll expect to be here in December? In December, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't forget to get your escrow in.
Because while they're taking out the trees, would be wetlands. The tree removal, right?
Those are the trees, yeah. Well, she said it didn't satisfy the soil tests, not the wetland definition test.
I haven't got a chance to look at the book, so I don't really know what it is.
Okay, give you guys a couple of minutes. Next on our agenda is another informal appearance with the new private school in Somers. It's related to the consideration of proposed amendments to the town of Somers, comprehensive plan update of 2016, and zoning text changes relative to the new private school in Somers by the Somers Town Board. The property is located at 294 Route 100, on the east-lee side of Route 100, and is an OB-100 zoning district. Do you have a PowerPoint presentation also? Do you want us out there? We do not. We showed it to you our last time, and this is the informal. Happy to do it this time. We're going old school. Okay. A new school with an old school? There you go. Very good.
Can you tilt it just a little bit? It's so extreme, I can hardly see.
I'm going to drop it.
I want the cameraman to see it, but...
You have a new official name, right, for the school?
It's not quite official yet. They have certain state rights, but I haven't been told yet we can use it yet publicly, but we're very close, I'm told.
Well, you've got a website advertising it.
I understand.
For new students.
I'm just not going to say it myself, so I don't have a legal problem, but I think we're close. I think we're close. I was told at least, and it may be this week, but last week I was told we're like here. We're about there on the name, so. You may have newer information than I do. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Weingarten. I'm a partner in the law firm of Del Bello, Don Ellen, Weingarten, Wise, and Whittaker, and it's my pleasure to be here this evening representing 294 Route 100 LLC and its agent, Sebastian Capital, the landlord, together with, hopefully formerly known as Evergreen Ridge LLC, the school, in connection with their request for site plan approval and other approvals to enable the development of a world-class, for-profit boarding and day STEM STEAM high school, grades nine to 12 on the property located at 294 Route 100, formerly known as the IBM campus. I'm joined here tonight by my partner, Peter Wise, Rich Williams and his associate from Insider Engineer, who you hear from shortly, Eric Keier, architect, and Bonnie Von Olsen from Kimley Horn, our planning firm. We have petitioned, as you know, for zoning changes and other associated changes. If approved, these proposals to the OB-100 district will permit the school use on approximately 345 of the 723 total site acres. We have worked hard to preserve and reuse the campus as much as possible. As you are aware, the only new building is the field house, and the playing fields have also been added. Otherwise, for the most part, we are renovating the existing campus and buildings, preserving its proud history. As I said, we've petitioned for the zoning changes and we have made our environmental submissions. The environmental submissions have gone back and forth with your experts on a couple of levels at this point, and we at this point believe that we're safe enough with respect to the site plan to be bringing forth this for an informal review and showing you what we plan to do. Now, that process is not over yet. We hope to be close to over with that process and looking forward to closing that out with, of course, the lead agency with regard to SEGA and the zoning changes and the special permitting and the things that we need in order to move forward, and the site plan would go after it. But nothing stops us from going forward with this at the same time, which is what we're looking for. So it's really basically simple this evening. We're going to present this site plan to you on an informal basis. Rich Williams is going to take you through it, and we're here to get your feet back on it to see if there's any work that we need to do as we're going forward, if there's any changes that need to be made. But again, much of what we're doing here is going to be internal to the buildings, et cetera, and we will concentrate on what we're doing with the new field house and the fields. And Rich will also take you through the phases that are involved with this, because that also impacts the site plan as to what we're doing. So I'm going to turn it over to Rich and ask him to take you through the plan. Thank you.
So, good evening. Rich Williams, Insight Engineering. Again, as Mark said, tonight, we're going to keep it high level as far as what the improvements are and really focus on how we see this proceeding with your board moving forward, because we do see this as a phased project, with Phase 1 including a subdivision, site plan and related environmental permits, and then subsequent to that, separate submissions to your board for a Phase 2 and a Phase 3. And as I go through these plans, I'll talk about why we see it that way and how that fits into our schedule. First, I'll start with the subdivision. We have recently submitted to the planning department a subdivision and Phase 1 site plan application. I'm not sure if that's been distributed to you. Our hope is that it is, so that we can appear before you on December 11th to formally begin the subdivision Phase 1 site plan permitting process. As Mark said, property is 723.1 acres. On the aerial I brought with me, you can see the Muscout reservoir, Interstate 684, our property boundary in blue. We have New York 116, which forms our northern boundary. New York State Route 100 forms our western boundary, and New York State Route 138 to our south. There are five existing buildings that form the main office campus located centrally in the site. There is a central services building, and then four existing office buildings, OB 1 through 4. through four. Just to the west of them, as you move closer to Route 100, there's a Facilities Yard that contains a 500,000 gallon water storage tank, which serves as the main storage tank for the water distribution system. There's a single centralized distribution system supplied by three public water supply wells. There's the wastewater treatment plant, which does have a surface discharge. The centralized cooling towers are located there, as well as centralized petroleum storage. What we are envisioning is a subdivision that allows us to lease the parcel to the school. The subdivision would create four parcels. The school property, you can see the proposed subdivision lines in red. The school property would be located centrally in the site, would be 344.9 acres. Lot Two would be created for the Facilities Yard, which would contain the wastewater treatment plant, and would be 35 and a half acres. And because of where the existing buildings and Facilities Yard lie, that then creates a northern parcel and a southern parcel, where the northern parcel is 109.7 acres, and the southern parcel is 233 acres. Okay? So, as part of our submission that we just made to the planning department, we did include a preliminary subdivision plat. That plat does lay out the property lines. It does not yet show easements. We are still working through those easements as far as how we're going to set up access and utility easements, so our subsequent submissions will add those, that information to the plat. Now, moving into the site plans. All of the improvements are going to be located within the ring road that forms the existing office complex, and that ring road shows here. The existing office buildings show up in gray, so you have the Central Services Building, OB-1, 2, 3, and 4. For Phase One, we are seeking to open the school for a summer program in 2021, which means we need to start construction in the spring of 2020. From there, grades nine and 10 would be the first incoming class in the fall of 2021. To accommodate that, we need to renovate some of the existing buildings to create dormitory and classroom space, as well as, you know, centralized administration spaces, cafeterias, auditorium. A lot of that was the presentation that you saw from Eric at the joint meeting with the town board. Outside the building, what we need to do, and I'm sorry, I actually put up Phase Three first. Let me just flip these. Outside the building for Phase One, which is part of the application that was just submitted to you, we're going to be constructing baseball fields with a shared outfield in the northwest corner of the property. We're going to be constructing the 28,000 square foot fieldhouse that Mark referenced. We are also going to be repurposing existing parking lots by removing the asphalt and constructing a softball field and multi-use field, as well as an additional multi-use field to the east of the softball field. We're then going to be taking existing parking lots in the southeast corner of the site and repurposing those as tennis courts, as well as constructing three drone pads or small circular areas of asphalt where drones can be taken off and landed as part of the STEAM program. As we go through these, you know, through the various iterations or the various phases, what's important to note is, in total, there's 51.8 acres of impervious surfaces on site. We are going to be reducing pavement by about 20% to 41.8 acres by the time we get to Phase Three. Each phase results in a reduction in, in impervious surfaces, and what comes along with that is a natural benefit to stormwater quality and quantity. At the urging of Woodard and Curran, we've actually run phosphorus loading calc for each phase, phosphorus again being the pollutant of concern in our watershed, and we can demonstrate that there are substantial reductions in phosphorus for each phase, and that has been provided in the documents submitted to the town board as part of the SEER review. In addition, anytime we talk about new impervious surface such as the fieldhouse, which is being constructed in an area that exists as meadow, we're going to be installing stormwater features in conformance with today's standards, including the enhanced phosphorus removal supplement. So again, you're going to see more stormwater treatment on site, as well as a reduction in impervious surfaces. Last, in Phase One, we're going to be upgrading some of the landscaping, particularly at the entrance to the Central Services Building. And that is the package that you now have in front of you, with which we're seeking to start construction this spring. Once we begin construction, we're then going to also submit permitting for Phase Two. When we move into Phase Two, we'll submit a new site plan application to you and related environmental permits, and at this point, we're focusing really on the western portion of the campus. We would seek to open Phase Two for 2022, and that would allow the expansion of Grade 11. So in, in 2021, we'll open the school with grades nine and 10. When we open Phase Two in 2022, we'll bring in Grade 11, and that comes with it the need for additional fields. So during Phase Two, we propose to construct our synthetic turf field and track, which would be located adjacent to the fieldhouse constructed in Phase One, as well as an additional multi-use field. What I want to point out about the fields, there will be only one synthetic turf field, and that is this one here in Phase Two. All of the other fields will be natural grass fields.
Why should you choose that, if you don't mind interrupting?
Based on the needs of the school. You don't...
It's going to require more water, though.
It will. But the way they use the fields, the way they need the fields, you don't need to necessarily build everything as a track field. They're, they're expensive to build. And if you don't need that many synthetic turfs, there's environmental benefits and health and cost. Just to touch on field lighting briefly, the synthetic turf field will be lit with four lights, and then the baseball fields in northwest corner will be lit. When we previously presented at the joint meeting, we had talked about lighting three sets of fields and considering bringing it back down to two. We were going to light fields on the eastern portion of the site that is no longer being proposed. It is just the two sets of fields that are being lit.
Not the tennis courts?
Not the, uh, as of right now, there are no lights on the tennis courts. So, moving into Phase Three. Again, the improvements outside the buildings are pretty focused. It really sits in the southern portion of the site. Here again, we'll be removing parking lots and repurposing them as natural grass multi-use fields. So, come on, Mr. ...
I have, I have one question. With all the fields being developed, and I realize that we're dealing with '22, '23 before it's fully utilized, what kind of sports programs does the school have in mind? Is it intramural, or is it interscholastic?
My understanding is they'll be interscholastic, but the school, the school doesn't focus on its sports program. This is primarily an academic school.
So primarily intramural?
Interscholastic.
But it will be, okay. That leads to the second question. For all that activity, what type of security does the plan, the developer have in mind? Or is it going to be the town's responsibility to provide security?
No, we're...
Is there going to be a staff, a security staff on site?
We have recently hired a security, Bonnie, consultant, is that the appropriate term? Who is going to be developing an entire security plan and handbook, which is part of the environmental submission that we're going to be, have to be updating and doing. And is in fact, as we've talked about it at the previous joint board meeting, this is all, as you know, it's a, it's a lot of moving pieces, because not only are we doing this, they're putting the school together, and as the school becomes more of a reality, they're hiring more people and staff that we need to get on. So as this is coming into you, we will then be bringing that on. So the security will be the responsibility of the school. We've hired the consultant for it. We're going to be developing the protocols and the manuals and the things that are necessary to do that, and when we have them, we'll be providing them to the town to show them to you.
Yeah, and I realize that we're probably three years away from utilization of, of the fields.
Correct, but there are certain things that you have to, and your public safety people will have to be satisfied with before we're permitted to go forward.
That's why I asked.
We just don't have it tonight yet.
That's why I asked.
Okay.
Thank you. Rich, the, the, you were talking about the fields, but can you just go through what the stages of the buildings that you're, that you're going to be renovating at what rate, which...
Yeah, I'm actually going to have Eric come up, because he knows it intimately.
Okay.
He tried.
Eric Keier, KGD Architects. So this is the Phase One, and the, the buildings here that are in the tan color?
Right.
There's a pointer, too, you can grab from the bottom, a wooden pointer here.
He's at, please.
Got it. I'm good, thanks. This is the central building. The central building's planned to be fully renovated for Phase One. That's Building Three, that will also be renovated for Phase One. Building Three is half academic and half dormitory. And Building Four is the same. It's half academic and half dormitory. In Phase Two, Building Two will be renovated, and that's 100% dormitory. And in Phase Three, Building One would be renovated, and that's 100% dormitory. All, all the academic spaces will, are planned to be built out as part of Phase One.
Your, your construction schedule, you said you want to start construction in the spring and, and have those three buildings renovated by the fall? Eighteen months. No, 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 six months.
So, Phase One, we're planning to, to break into three different construction pieces. We're doing some interior demolition as a prep process, so that we can really see what the existing conditions are behind the walls and behind the ceilings.
Right.
And that's planned to be done early this next spring.
Right.
We also, for, because we're planning to have tours starting in August through December, typically when students and prospective teachers, et cetera, are coming to visit the campus, they're visiting about a year in advance. And so by August, we're planning to, to start tours on campus, where people would be driving up from 138 to the main building. So we'll be restoring the area in front of the main building and doing a tour route, which includes some of the, the model spaces, if you will. We'll go into the lobby, we'll see the auditorium, we'll see a couple of classrooms. We'll go down to the cafeteria. From there, go down, there's a fitness space, some labs, and then we'll end up being able to, to go into part of Building Three, which would be renovated in advance of the main construction, so that we can see some, some typical dormitory spaces, dormitory rooms, as well as some science labs and classrooms on the first floor there. And that work is planned to be done between mid to late spring till August, so that we can have those tours start in August. The expectation is that the majority of the construction, all the exterior work, will commence once we have site plan approval. Our goal is to have that done, so that, starting this next summer, we can start doing the full renovation, the construction of the fieldhouse, and all the site work that Rich mentioned a few minutes ago.
So just repeat, so the school is going to open up in September when? Twenty-one. Twenty-one, no, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I heard somebody say 2020. Okay. Start in 2020. That's, that's, that's what made me nervous. Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
And just to mention, I'm sure we come up at the end with Rich, this totally would make sense, and if you were, if it's something you'd like to do, we'd love to schedule a site tour for you to come, and I think it'd be a little easier to take you through to see what's there, et cetera, and what we're planning to do, et cetera. So when you're ready to schedule that with that, we're more than happy to take you through.
I was actually going to bring that up tonight, because, you know, right now, we have quote unquote "good weather," although it's cold. Next meeting is December, maybe we should schedule tonight. It's not like you have to stake anything out for us. The structures are there.
We're prepared, so...
What does the board think?
Sure.
Next week it's supposed to be warm.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if it's cold, just so long as there isn't a foot of snow.
Do you want to do this Saturday or the following Saturday? Tell me your schedules.
Following Saturday would work better for me, but if this, if it has to be this Saturday, I'll cancel and make it work.
We can do the following Saturday. That's, that's not Thanksgiving.
Is it possible to do the following one? I, I don't have anybody from the client here who would have the facilities person here, so I'd like to give that a little advance notice.
So a week from Saturday, we're talking about?
Which is one day.
I'm going to have a problem with that, but, you know, I don't have to be...
Chris, what date is that?
The 23rd.
11/23?
Yeah. That would be the second Saturday.
I'm sure that's fine. If there's any issue, Saret, I'll, I'll let you know, but I just want to confirm it with the client, that it's failed.
Jen, you okay with that, and Saret? Okay? You guys okay with that?
Is there a time?
Time, please, yeah.
What did we do last time? Eight-thirty? Eight-thirty, nine o'clock? Eight-thirty?
Nine o'clock is what we normally do.
Nine o'clock.
Uh, but I need to know where to go.
Where?
Yeah, where we meet you.
Yeah, it's simple. You're going to, you're going to come in off of 100 at the entrance, then come through the g...
Off of 100?
Off, off of 100 and come up, go right up through the gate to the main, to the main building. We'll, we'll, we'll put an email together with directions and figure it out and invite everybody. That's fine.
I have a question.
So do I.
I have this memory, and maybe I'm imagining it, earlier, at one point, were you guys going to build like a, another structure, it was going to be like a headmaster's house or something?
We, we had that on our original plan. It's no longer, it's not included at the moment.
I'm not dreaming, okay.
Right, no, we had that on our original plan.
But you're going to build some kind of a field house?
The field house is an athle, an indoor athletic facility, but we're not...
I couldn't make sure I wasn't missing something.
Correct, no, we had a, we had a, a headmaster's house, but they've decided to handle that differently.
Okay.
I have a question, kind of. We're not the lead agency, okay? And we really should be focused on what we're talking about, but I, I have to throw this out. I looked at the video that was recently put out, I think a week ago. And it suddenly dawned on me, the, I'm aware that the town board has gotten a contract, because they're the lead agency, see, normally we're the lead agency, but in this case, they should be, for Frederick P. Clark to do a traffic study. So I'm going to ask a traffic study question, just because I'm on the planning board, and I'll ask you. This is a very large campus, and when I looked at the video, I saw, they, they had little stick figures running around, and some of them were on bicycles. And it suddenly occurred to me, oh my, we're going to have, what? When it's fully, at full capacity, we're going to have, what, 2,500 teenagers up there with bicycles?
Firstly, I don't think there's 2,500 with bicycles, but there's, we're talking about a maximum of 1,800 students.
A maximum, whatever the figure was.
A maximum of 1,800 students that we're talking about.
Eighteen hundred, well, that's a lot of bikes. And that should fit into the transportation study. And then it made me think further. I have a son who does a lot of work out in Kansas, Wichita, I think it is, and he loves going there, and I said, "Why do you like going out to Kansas?" And he said, "Because they have scooters. You can get around the city on these scooters." And I said, "Oh, my God." You know, I immediately thought of your campus. So I, I don't mean to be planting a seed, but I'm thinking, I'm on a planning board, I'm suddenly concerned about the impact on the town of 1,500 or so bikes, that's all.
I'm not sure it's that number, but I can tell you that there is a full traffic pedestrian study that's being submitted as part of the environmental review.
Right, well, I hope they include bicycles.
And I saw Saret taking notes while you were making those questions, and I'm sure that those things are now going to be studied as part of our next submission, if they're not already there.
And I don't know about these scooters, but I gotta believe they're going to move east.
And, correct, and there is, and there are rules...
Oh, and they're electric.
And there are rules about students, and we do control when they're allowed off campus and what they're allowed to do going off campus, whether that would be bicycles and scooters and things. And we can certainly look at what restrictions would be appropriate.
I'm sorry to interject that in this orderly...
My feeling is the number of bicycles will be, bicyclists will be cut in half the second time they try to go up that hill.
I was just about, I want you to know, I thought that myself, but I, now they have those electric bikes, too.
Yeah, let me, I just came back from LA, and the scooters are all over LA.
All over Wichita. All over Wichita.
Okay? They're all over LA.
And, and hills don't interfere-
Get in the way.
-with the scooters. So that is an interesting point, and it needs to be studied because, obviously, if you're gonna be having private school students here who are gonna be paying somewhat price, a very pricey tuition-
They can afford the bike.
-a scooter is not gonna be that much of a problem.
You may be right. There also may be restrictions on our end on things like insurance and other things as to what we'll permit on our campus or not, but you've raised the issue, I'm not sure it was in the study, we'll certainly-
Yeah.
I mean, if it really works, we could have them at Heritage Hills soon, too, you know, they could be all over Heritage Hills, so we'll see, we'll see. They could be all over somewhere, it's not just our people, they could be you, too.
Most, most of the people in Heritage Hills have trouble walking, so I don't think they're gonna get on scooters.
My in-law, my in-laws live there, I, I'm there often.
Excuse me.
They both live there.
At all these meetings with the town board, the planning board, has a principal of this corporation or school ever been to, to talk to us about what he plans or what happened? We don't see, we don't see any principals, we just see lawyers handling it.
No, 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 Mr. Disipio has been at, at least two or three of your, your meetings-
Yeah.
-who's the head of the school, not the headmaster yet, we haven't hired the headmaster yet, but the, the, the head of the school corporation that's putting this together has appeared, I think, three separate times here in the town.
Absolutely, yes.
And I, and I, and I will say to you that we've also talked that he needs to do and will be doing, we're putting together a major address where he'll come in, not to talk about the site plan, not to talk about the real estate approvals, but to talk about the school, but we're waiting to have the critical mass on the issues that you're all gonna want to hear about before he does that, so we, we hope to be able to do that in short order.
The reason I ask this question is that people in the town have heard about a school going up there, and they want to know how it's gonna pertain to the town with their children, with the, the students that are gonna be there, and we don't have a principal to talk to.
Right.
To find out what kind of organization this is gonna be, where, who's gonna show up, who's coming into town. People are worried about this.
Okay.
They have, especially they're worried, to me personally. And I'm just saying that we don't know anything, we see people that we know, but we don't see the principals that are here.
Very fair point, but again, the, the head of the school has been here on three occasions.
Yes, he's a-
We will have him here again for a major address with regard to school issues, but your point is taken, and as soon as we have more the faculty and the headmaster, et cetera, in place, they, they're gonna be part of this community, they will be here often.
Can you just explain again, you had mentioned it earlier about subdivisions that were gonna happen here? Explain to me why you need to do that? Is it for your construction phases, or are you looking to change the whole?
No, there's, there's four lots. Essentially, you have the one main lot for the school.
Right.
You have the one main lot for the infrastructure, where we told you, the water, the water tank, et cetera. So those are the two, and that's gonna service the school, so you have those, those two lots. That is going to be leased to the school. That's the property that is going to be leased out to the school. There is then remaining property on both sides that we showed you, the north lot and the south, which is why they're not connected and just being one, so we put them in two because they're not, they're on two different sides of the property. That is being retained by the owner of the property that Sebastian Capital represents for future. We have no plan on it, well, you know, we've been asked that question, and we'll answer it again. They say, "Well, why don't you just say you're not building anything?" And we're saying, perpetuity's a long time. May very well be that the school, 20 years from now, might want to build a laboratory somewhere on something. It may, and we're not allowed to do that at this point with the current zoning, we'd have to come back, ask for a rezoning to do that if we ever wanted to do it, and ask for permission to do it. So the school might want to grow. There might be some other use that goes up there, so people, for example, were concerned, "Well, you might want multifamily housing." We made sure that wasn't in the zoning. We don't have any uses in there that are noxious or anything of that nature, there's nothing that we're planning on doing for now, but the people that bought this facility, in my opinion, much to the benefit of this town, because they also bought the Pepsi facility, they're long-term owners, they see long-term opportunity that isn't a year or two or five years, it's decades in the future, and they hope to potentially use this for something someday, they just don't know what it is at the moment. So that's why we're leaving it there. We would've done it, it's only three lots, if we had them connected, but we did it just today.
Thank you.
A little public nine-hole golf course would be fun.
Mr. Weingarten, just to keep it straight in my mind, who do you represent? The owner of the property or the school?
The owner of the property.
All right. The owner of the property is free to use, we'll call it the north lot and the south lot. If they have somebody that comes in, you represent the owner, and they want to use it for what it legally can be used for.
Correct.
They're going to do that, right?
Correct, as, but as, as we've said, right now, I think the, I think the owner thinks currently that, long-term, the best use of that lot is probably something that's gonna be in connection with this school, and it's gonna take a while for this school to get up, running, successful, et cetera. You know, you know, schools are, can generate a lot of different things, especially a steam school that could generate certain uses, office and commercial uses that might want to be nearby to something like this. So we just don't know where it's gonna head, and again, all of this would be subject to the review of the town and approval for that, but at the moment, we have no uses, we have no planned use for any of that, we've been off an awful lot, and we want to get this off the ground.
You could have an incubator site to develop technologies and things.
I hope that they're planning a long-term lease.
It's a very long-term lease, yes.
Any other?
Yeah, excuse my ignorance, but the, the, those two areas that you're not developing, what, exactly what are they gonna, what's the zoning gonna be?
What it is, OB 100.
The same, the same as it is right now.
It's gonna stay the same what it is now.
Except with one exception.
It could be manufacturing.
I mean, tanning prices?
Sorry, Peter Wise, it's gonna remain OB 100, exactly the same, with one exception, which is that we propose to eliminate the possibility of multifamily use, which currently exists today. So OB 100 is office and, and related uses, and single-family R-80 is what, is what's permitted.
Excuse me, you're gonna have to put up with me at the moment. It's R-80.
Right.
All right. Supposing somebody came in to that north lot, and they wanted to use the R-80 and build houses? That would be permitted?
Yes, that would be permitted.
Well, I don't see how you think you got rid of multifamily housing, because I'm on the planning board, and if somebody came in and wanted to put in 12 houses on that R-
Well, that's not multifamily, multifamily-
Let me finish.
Okay.
Do you know what our code says? R-80? You want to put in 12 houses? We're the planning board, we can say, "Oh, yeah, okay, prove you can do 12 houses." So you prove you can do 12 houses in that lot one. Then we say, because we have the power to do it, "Okay, cluster it."
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Okay, cluster it.
But clusters, yeah, but that's, that's-
Do you know what clustering is?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's multifamily housing. You didn't know that?
No, I don't agree with that, it's single-family housing.
Well, it's according to how you cluster it.
Well, yeah, but my, my question is, why, why did you-
Well, if you cluster and you put them next to each other, according to the building inspector, that's the multifamily house.
We're, we're talking as lawyers, I'm not sure you're taught, the legal definition of multifamily housing would be attached.
Attached housing.
And this is not attached housing, so we're just, we're, we're using terms that we're used to, and if that's confusing, we'll apologize, but-
Yeah, I know.
What we're talking about is single-family, and I can tell you right now, we don't believe that that, currently, and I've had the discussion with the owner, that that is an optimal use of this property, and there would be no intention of going forward with this right now.
All right.
Is it possible that the headmaster's house could show up at some point? We'd have a house over there, we'd come talk to you and, and speak about, that's possible. But as of right now, we don't think that's long-term, the good use of this property. We, she intends, just like with Pepsi, to sit here long-term, and her ownership sits here as a long-term, is gonna, over time, decide what's best. So what we've proposed, was we proposed to leave it exactly as it is now, so it would be no different after this approval as it is right now, if somebody wanted to come in on that property and propose single-family homes or cluster on those homes, they could do that right now. Then we were told, but by the way, you might get opposition if you just leave it that way, because people could put apartment houses in there or condominium, and we said, "Tell you what, we're never gonna do that, take it out." So we've made it even more limiting than it is under the, under the current environment.
Could, in the future, and with the zoning change now, Sebastian Capital could sell off that subdivision, which is now zoned R-80 to a developer? Would then have to come in front of us?
Not to sell it, they wouldn't.
Someone's clear, it's not zoned R-80.
It's OB 100.
No, it's OB 100.
It's OB 100, but OB 100 allows for the uses that are permitted within R-80, it's, it's underneath the zone.
It's the same, right.
But it is OB 100, so primarily, it's a zone where you allow these commercial and laboratory, that's how IBM came about, under that zoning.
So I thought they were, we were, we were decommissioning the OB 100 on the zoning side.
We were just being-
And turning it into-
We were being open with you to say, "Yes, it's OB 100, but under OB 100, you're allowed to have the R-80 zoning is, those uses are within the OB 100."
Question.
I'm still confused, I'm still confused on, on, what did you, what did you respond to? What, what resistance from the town that you opted out for non-multi-
We, we didn't have resistance. The town, when we talked to the, came in early on and said, "This is what we're proposing, here's the zoning, how do you think you want to treat this, what should we do? Let's leave the existing zoning in place, let's put a special permit in with respect." There was actually, schools were allowed, but I think it was colleges and universities and not high schools, so we changed the terminology within, that's with, with our proposals. When we came through it, and I don't remember who it exactly was on the town side, it was mentioned that there might be concern of some of the neighbors here, that you're gonna turn this into a big condominium development or a big multifamily development, let's make sure they know that's never gonna happen. So we agreed and took it out of the zone, that while today, you could come in for that request, if this zone change is approved for the school, we no longer have the ability to do that under the zoning.
Yeah, but you have, you have, right across the, right across Route 100, there is 66 multifamily, multiple housing coming in, and I'm, I'm just confused.
Where?
Gus Boniello's.
Boniello's property.
His condos.
That's condos.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what they've eliminated.
He's just, he's just, they've just taken it out. If, if this, if this zoning change goes through to allow this school, that will be taken out.
Avalon, Avalon is multifamily.
So that's the protection.
Right, Avalon is multifamily.
Avalon is multifamily.
Right, I mean, that's the protection, right?
Single, these simple lots are not.
Correct, correct.
Now, historically, Sebastian Capital came, and when they initially purchased this property, and correct me if I'm wrong, they were looking at options and what to do with it, and one of the options was to, was for housing, right? They were gonna allow or wanted to petition the town to allow residential apartments or some, some sort of variant thereof, and that received a lot of pushback.
Correct.
And I think that's why we're, we're having concerns that that's not gonna resurface again, you know, through some back channels.
Yeah, there was no, there was never a plan for that, but they were looking at all, they were met with the town and said, "Well, what can we do with this property? You know, we're, we're trying to, you know, we're gonna use the Pepsi property to multi-tenant and bring in all," so that's a lot of space to have to bring back into, to, to use, so we're not expecting that to happen.[1630.36]